Um, okay, so starting from the beginning, welcome to our virtual town hall. We're so happy that you can join us today. This is the first time we're having a virtual town hall. I know the club is over sixty years old, so perhaps there's been a town hall in the past. I don't know that that history. But we're really happy that we can meet with you today. In the past, so every year, there's an annual general meeting, AGM. And that is, it happens usually around this time of year. So in the springtime, that meeting is generally open to all members. And we discuss different topics of what's happening with the club, club memberships, who the coaches are, and anything interesting happening as well. Unfortunately, this winter and spring, as you know, all the competitions have been canceled and practices have been canceled as well. It's totally out of our control and we're just following the policies that are and the regulations that are handed down to us from the federal provincial and the municipal governments, as well as the governing bodies for track and field, Athletics Canada and Athletics Ontario. We are in touch with all of them regularly and in fact, Athletics Ontario, and it's open to the public as well. If you go to the Athletics Ontario website, you will see that they are having town halls as well, and I think their first one was the last week of March. It was really interesting today, they had, well, they always have their CEO Paul Osland on it, and he's giving regular updates as well with regards to the competitions that are happening, which they're not happening. And today they had Nicole Forster on, and she's a former national team athlete. I think she was a high jumper. And she competed at the Olympics, I think. Anyways, she now has her PhD in sports psychology. And so it's kind of interesting that they had their town hall today and they were pretty much talking about some of the similar topics that we're going to be talking about today. But because we're Etobicoke Track and we're club specific, we just wanted to give you some updates from our end and not just from a general regulatory bodies perspective. So just a brief introduction, I'm Christine Wallace. My maiden name is Boak, so I still use that as my middle name. And if that name, last name sounds familiar, that's because my dad is Helmut Boak, and he was a member of Etobicoke Track Club in the sixties and the seventies and eighties. And he was a race walk, first marathon runner turned race walker. And he had, I think he's, I'm not sure if he still holds records for Etobicoke Track Club. Arturo Huerta apparently broke them, and he was on the Olympic team as well. So that now we're back in Canada. I was in the state, I actually had a, I was on a track and field scholarship and then I came back to the States, my husband's American. So anyways, we're back in Canada now as of last summer. And we're so happy to contribute and give back to the track and field community. It's in our blood, really, DNA, it is in mine. And my kids are on, in the track club as well, so we're really happy to contribute. So just going forward, today, this week is actually the Canadian Mental Health Awareness Week, and it's been given that name by the Canadian Mental Health Association. So I think it's only fitting that we have a psychologist join us today. She's a, I've been practicing for a number of years and she has her own practice as well. She is, she has handled assessments and she meets with young people all the way up to adults. So we're really happy that she's able to join us today. And just to introduce our panel of people who are going to be speaking as well. So our head honcho Julius, he is here as well. And some of the coaches are going to be chatting and giving some tips and advice on training while you are training alone. And then we will have our guest speaker. So without further.
Julius, I've just unmuted you. If you want to say a few words for all of our attendees, it looks like we have about twenty-seven or twenty-eight people here now. I hope everybody can hear us. But Julius, why don't you say a few words for us?
Well, do. Howdy, everybody. I know all of us are missing our dear stadium right now. And I'm assuming that in addition to missing the workouts, you know, all the sweat and tears, that you're also missing the friendship of your fellow athletes and coaches. And we do want you to know that the club officers are working really hard to make that happen as soon as possible. So stay positive, stay healthy, and we'll have more on that throughout the talk. Just some quick points, our stadium permit is now issued to go no earlier than July 6th. We do have the permit, but of course, the city has let us know that it is going to be subject to a lot of other rules and regulations. So when we have those items sorted out, potentially in the next few weeks, we'll get more details on whether or not the stadium is actually going to be issued us. I would presume the main sticking point is the social distancing aspect, right? And also what they consider mass gatherings. And just letting you know that the board is going to consider them very early and maybe, you know, if we don't reach the numbers that allow us to have full workouts, we can have partial workouts, we can have scheduled workouts. There's a lot of options that we can pull off if we have to. But, you know, we're hopeful that the permit will start in July. It's still looking a little bit on a dicey side, so we'll just have to stay tuned. And I think hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have lots more information on that. Board's been pretty active and has been very busy, actually, reviewing various potential grants and assistance, some of which have already been approved and actually received, which is good. So, you know, we're looking out for the club and making sure that we can stay financially viable during this time. As well, we had an option for some equipment and the coaches have compiled sort of an equipment wish list. Actually, it's quite extensive. And we're hoping that we can also get some government assistance to help fulfill that entire wish list. And if not, we're going to look at other means for making sure that the coaches have everything they need to put on a good workout. Nevertheless, I think this year is going to be a tough year for us in terms of revenue. Our revenue is going to suffer and we're okay if things go for several months. And it'll get a little more worrisome if restrictions linger into the next year. But suffice it to say that we'll make it work one way or the other. So the club is very stable and financially sound, but no worries there. The summer camp is also scheduled to go and with the same starting date of July 6th. I think John, not sure if he's on board here or not, but he's continuing with the job interviews. And the game plan is to have that wrapped up in mid-May and go on to making offer letters and fulfilling the staff list. Now, we again have been told that tentatively, the permit is there and available, but subject to the other social distancing guidelines. So we still not sure that the camp will go through. We're quite hopeful, it sounds like there's a lot of optimism in the, out there. So I am assuming that it will. We are proceeding as if it will and we'll just see what happens in the next little while and carry on from there. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Julius.
We've just had John join us. John, if you're able to hear me, I was hoping you might just give a quick greeting. I'm going to unmute you if you want to say hello to everybody, John.
Hello, how's everyone?
Good.
Welcome, we can hear you. Good, thank you for joining.
John, we just mentioned that, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, yeah, we just mentioned that the staff interviews for camp are continuing.
Yes.
And I put it out on the limb there that we're hoping to finish the interviews by mid-May, is that?
We're gonna, we're gonna be finished May 12th.
Okay.
Next week, so.
Oh, excellent, okay. And then we'll be doing selection shortly thereafter.
Yep.
Great, so John, if you have any bingo and volunteer requests or updates, the floor is yours.
Okay, both bingles are sort of like, not running right now because of the government requirements, but as soon as we get back into it, we're going to need our EHS bingo volunteers to get back on the schedule again. And I will be emailing them on that. For the Gladstone, we have four, four or five workers who are available from our old crew. But got to get hold of Joanne Charles, and she, she offered to be the coordinator for the Gladstone Bingo Volunteers.
So how many volunteers are we looking at that we need for the club once it all starts happening?
For each, for EHS Bingo, you can have up to twenty.
Okay.
For the other one, it's about eight.
Okay. Okay, so if any parents are on here and they're listening and they want more information about what's all entailed in a bingo and volunteering for that, please feel free to email the administrator, etobicoquetrack.ca, or Julius, or John, if you have his contact information as well, and we'd be happy to share that information with you. Just as an aside, the bingos help fund the majority of club expenses. And so it's our number one income generator, and it really helps with a number of major expenses, such as our clubhouse and, and other expenses too for the coaches. And so we're really hoping that we can get some support for that. The good thing is, is that it's now 2020, and I was told by my dad, who I mentioned was a member of Etobicoke Track earlier, that there used to be a lot of smoking in these bingo halls. And so now we don't have to deal with that. So it's a pleasant environment, you get to chat with people. And again, if you want more information, please feel free to contact us and we'll be happy to share that information with you. John, did you have any other comments that you wanted to make before we move on to the coaches?
Well, as soon, as soon as I hear the bingo halls are going to be open, I'll be getting emails out and things like that.
Perfect. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we are going to move on to the third part of our meeting tonight, and that is coaches. So if you're, if you're a coach and you're here, I think we see Mo, Trevor, Julius, me and Ryan. I think Godfrey's on there too, so if Godfrey, Godfrey, if you want to have a word to, you can go right after Julius. Okay, I'll, I'll just get started. So basically, what we've been doing is the social distancing workouts. And how that started was that we knew that we might be in this for a while, and we knew that athletes would be stuck at home. So I'm also a personal trainer, and I know that accountability is huge for continuing motivation for working out. So having a specific time to work out with and sort of us meeting, I know it's virtual, it's, it's a way to keep accountable as well. The social distancing workouts are not in lieu of your running workouts, they are in addition to. But if you haven't had the motivation to go outside, or you haven't had a way to do that, then this is a great substitute for that as well, because we are using our cardiovascular system, anaerobic and our anaerobic system as well, so with the high intensity intervals. And then it's great cross-training. So some of those lateral muscles and abdominal muscles and, and your back and just the different muscle groups, the smaller muscle groups that sometimes if we're only running or we're only doing one sport, we tend to avoid sometimes. So this is a great cross-training as well and great for motivation. And I really appreciate that we got twenty-two or twenty-three responses from the survey. So based on those surveys, we did add Wednesdays at eleven-thirty. So we started with the running drills today. It's about a fifteen to twenty-minute example of how to do the different exercises. So we also have weight training coming up and the stability ball, and then one more day of running drills. And if any of you are on Instagram, then you'll notice that Trevor and his daughters have been doing some Instagram demonstrations as well. He did running drills, so that was great yesterday. So again, we have one, I had planned a month of social distancing workouts. I'm hoping that this is our last month of social distancing, but you never know. So we will continue doing those workouts, they are free for you. It is open to the public as well, and they are recorded, so you can do them at any time. And again, for any of the junior distance athletes that are on here today, if you haven't been in touch with me, Ryan, or Anita, please feel free to reach out. I am in touch with a number of junior distance athletes, and I send those workouts out to you on Sundays or Mondays. I was sending them out Mondays and Tuesdays, but Sundays generally work out better when I could just send them all out to the different people. I am happy to work with the different levels. So for example, the people that I'm working with right now, I have three different levels. If we have a fourth level in there too, that's fine. If you haven't been running at all during this time, that is okay. You can start back up again and we can start you up slowly. So we're very flexible, we're happy to help, we're here to help you, so please reach out. And that was, yeah.
And we've got Coach Godfrey and Mo here as well. Feel free to chime in, gentlemen. Can you hear us?
Well, yeah, I can hear you guys.
Okay, all right. I'll just say a couple of generic things, I'm just looking at the, the agenda here. I wanted to say a couple of things about the more basic elements of health. I mean, we think of training in terms of workouts for sure, and intervals and exercises and drills, but keep in mind nutrition, sleep, water, fresh air. These, these are the, the things that will help your immune system stay strong and also ensure that core strength, that base strength, that's going to serve you well when it does come time to hit the intervals hard again. So even though you don't have the, you know, the school schedule perhaps to keep you on track, try to make sure you get into bed at a decent hour every night. Eight hours to eleven hours, actually, is recommended for kids. And the hours before midnight are better than the hours after midnight, just saying. So early to bed, early to rise makes a person healthy, wealthy, and wise, I think is an old saying. And it'll be good for your, for your running and your general health as well. So get that sleep, drink water. I know that Gatorade and Pepsi and Sprite might taste better, but you know the drill there, stay away from those, too many of those simple sugars. Get your nutrition, get that protein, the fresh fruits, the fresh vegetables and fiber. That'll, that'll help your colon, that'll help your whole body. Just watch out for that overall health. Stay away from the candy, please. Do your, do your parents a favor. The dentist already has enough money, he doesn't need any of your money. Eat healthy, stay away from the candy, and watch that general nutrition. That's, that's my little talking point. Mo, I'll turn it over to you if you want to say a couple of words for us.
Oh, boy, okay. Hey, guys, hopefully everyone's doing really well and keeping busy and keeping somewhat active. To my athletes, I know you guys are staying home and being couch potatoes. Don't worry, I'm the same as you. Some of you have been working out and asking for workouts. We can't really run on the tracks or at the park, obviously not. But if you can run around your block, be safe, don't cough on anybody on the sidewalk at least. I don't know, hopefully we can come back as soon as possible. But like Christine and Julius said, we don't know. All we can do is go for walks. And yeah, I'm, I'm out of touch with this whole coaching thing, I'm sorry, okay?
But Mo, we want to see you on Instagram.
You want to see me on Instagram? Why would you do that?
Demonstrating, the kids love you.
Oh, God.
No pressure with everyone watching.
Put you on the spot or anything.
I, okay.
You're great, you're, you're, you know what you're doing.
I mean, I, I've, I've been challenged to, with Coach Chris and another coach, Peter, for a race I haven't been, been training, so. I'm willing to send me workouts, but he, he's not sending me anything.
We, we are happy to call you at six AM when we do our workouts.
Six AM, you mean PM? I don't get up till like four A, four PM, but okay. Anyways, to my athletes and to all the kids, we are looking forward to seeing you. I'm sorry for those who were looking forward to competing indoor season. We can't do it for the outdoor season, I don't think that's going to happen either. But hopefully, we can all focus and gear up for the cross-country season. And I think Julius is going to tell you later on, but we are hosting the 2021 Indoor Championship, right, Jules?
Possibly, it's up in the air still. So the idea is if we can sort of cancel this year and start next year as if it was 2020 all over again, then we're going to go for hosting the indoor MTA championships next March. It's still up in the air, and we just don't have a final solution at the Minor Track Association.
Okay.
All right.
Awesome.
Fingers crossed. Coach Trevor, are you on? If you are, I'm sorry, I don't recognize your login.
I don't think he's here.
Not here, okay.
Trevor was having a lot of trouble connecting, so.
Okay, well, let's skip down the list. Coach Godfrey, are you there?
Yes, I'm here and I'm listening.
All right. We can hear you. Go ahead, the floor is yours. If you want to say a few words to any of your athletes, some tips and advice, go ahead.
Okay, the only few words I have to say to my athletes is I'm alive, I'm kicking. All right. This, this thing is, is a damper onto our whole year's program. And I know a lot of the athletes have seen this as a letdown, but I don't want to see it as a letdown. I love to see if as we can look at, look at this incident or this episode we're going through right now, and we can draw some possibilities from it. Okay, and I'm looking forward, right now my focus is on, on next year, because I don't think anything will be happening this year. So the focus is on, on next year. So we come about house, I mean, ready and, and ready to take on, and take on next year. And for now, that's all I, I think I have to say for now.
That's awesome, thank you, Coach Godfrey, that was great.
Thank you.
All right, Julius, tips and advice for the distance people?
All right, so everybody knows my two Cs. One is consistency and the other is communication. So first bit of advice, contact your coach, bug him, call Mo twice a day. But get in touch with him and make sure that you're doing something. Doing nothing is not an option. For my group, they know the drill, consistency and communication. But this kind of time period, we know that all of our athletes have certain strengths and they have certain weaknesses, right? Well, this is a great time to focus on training that's going to bring you some real benefits when things go back to normal. So if you have already discussed this with your coach, you know that potentially you may need more flexibility, you may need more core strength, maybe weak upper body, you might need some strength training. But there's no reason why some of those things can't be done on a weekly basis, if not more than certainly daily basis. Flexibility is pretty easy to do, you can do it watching TV. So the idea is not to sit around, not to waste this time, but to use it, use it wisely and use it effectively. So pick those things that you might be a bit weak on at other times and work on them till they're perfect, right? Do something that's going to help. Again, doing a little bit of a self-analysis and figuring out what your strengths really are and then what your weaknesses are. And if you can, try and work on the weaknesses. Of course, we've already mentioned, thanks, Ryan, that you do have to eat healthy through this time period. So eat, sleep, and work on anything that you can do at home. If you're lucky to have a gym in your basement, great, if not improvised, you can do upper body by lifting water bottles, you know, anything goes.
Yeah, Campbell's soup.
Campbell's soup, yeah. Yeah, so this, basically the idea is to keep busy and to, I hate to call them weaknesses, but build up your strength so you're a nice balanced athlete. And lastly, I would just go back to the same thing, call your coach, talk to him, ask for advice. If you don't know what they are, ask your coach what your weaknesses are, and I'm sure he'll tell you. All right, so call your coach, get some ideas, that's it.
Awesome, thank you so much, Julius. All right, before we, thank you to all the coaches who joined us today to give us some tips and advice and some words of positive encouragement, we really appreciate that. I just wanted to say a few things before we move on to our guest speaker tonight. Just, it's interesting, so three stories real quick about what people can do in really dire situations. So my dad just mentioned in, in the nineteen-sixties, he had three foot, three feet of snow one night, and he couldn't do the workout outside, so he did six hundred times twenty-meter loops in the basement. So you can do that, there's that, so like in Italy, when you couldn't leave the house. But, and, and so that's what, and, you know, and my dad was on the national team, and that's what you do, and that's what you did. There's two other people in history that I want to mention. One is, her name is Larissa Kleiman, and she was from, I think, West Germany, and I don't, I, I just, I just remembered this just now. And she was a figure skater, and she was a medalist of the Winter Olympics. And I remember listening to this story about her when, when I was a kid, and it just, it has stuck with me. But she only had, her parents were really, really poor, and so she could never go to one of those fancy skating rinks, and she didn't have the top coaching, but she really, really wanted to be a professional figure skater, which she ended up doing, and she got an Olympic medal. Her last name was Kleiman. And if you look it up, there is now what's called the Kleiman maneuver. And it's this amazing one-legged spin with a leg, leg way up in the air, figure, like a splits in the air, whatever. She only had five feet by five feet to practice, very small area for figure skating, but she got so good in that little tiny area, and she went on to win an Olympics. And another very prominent figure in history with, in fitness and wellness is Joseph Pilates. And if, if you don't know anything about him, he was a prisoner of war, and in his little jail cell, he created those Pilates movements. So all about balance, strength, core strength, and proper breathing in a little tiny jail cell. I mean, now people in Hollywood are paying a hundred and twenty dollars an hour to learn Joseph Pilates classical style, and it's kind of funny that he actually created it in his jail cell. So anyways, moving on, so there's a lot you can do, there's a lot we can't do, but there's a lot that we can do. And it's that whole half glass, the glass half-full, half-empty, for so many people, it's not that simple. I understand that, there's, there's trauma, there's different things involved. But if there's no real difficulties right now, and you're, you're just having a difficult time motivating and being motivated, perhaps think of those two people, or even my dad too, the Kleiman, Kleiman maneuver, Joseph Pilates and the whole half, the glass half-full versus half-empty, and maybe that can help just a little bit. Okay, moving on, I would like to introduce Dr. Myri Nurse. She's a psychologist, she's been practicing for many years. She is, we're so thankful that you're here with us today. Hi.
Hi, can you hear me? Does that, okay. I wasn't sure if Austin had.
I wasn't sure if Austin had the mic on.
Yeah, so Dr. Myri Nurse, we're so happy you can join us today. As I mentioned at the beginning, when we started our virtual town hall, that the Canadian Mental Health Association has called this week Mental Health Awareness Week. And honestly, I didn't even know that before asking you to join us. So I thought that was, it's pretty fitting though that you're joining us today. And I know that you've been practicing for many years and you've been in this field for many years. But I just wanted to know, we just wanted to hear a little bit what you have to say about some various topics related to COVID-19 and stress and anxiety and then some positive words at the end. And yeah, there is going to be interaction, so interaction here. So guests, so participants, if you want to type in a question while Dr. Nurse is speaking, then you're more than welcome to do that and I can read her and Ryan will read the question to her as well. But the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks Christina and thank you for inviting me to this town hall. I thought you did this on purpose. I thought you knew about the Mental Health Week and I thought, wow, she's really on the ball.
It all worked out.
Yeah, this is fantastic, excellent, this is great. And you know, I want this to be more interactive than me speaking because one, we don't have a lot of time. And I'm sure a lot of people have a lot of concerns or questions that they would like to discuss. And of course, I will not go into anything individual or too specific, but more general discussions. So the first thing I want to really, to speak about and to really jump on to what Julius was saying is, you know, to build your immune is the same thing to build your mental health. Eating well, sleep hygiene, getting a lot of sleep or enough sleep and minimizing your stress. Now, stress is something that we all go through every day. Every day we all go through stress. There's good stress and then of course, there's bad stress. Now, good stress motivates us to do what we have to do. For athletes, it motivates the athletes to get themselves to the position to perform when it comes to competition. You know, it makes us study, it makes us practice. It does a lot for us that are very positive. Stress becomes a problem when it's prolonged. And that's when it becomes dangerous in a sense, becomes more anxiety provoking. And when that happens, it's when it becomes distressful and someone is no longer able to cope with their daily life, their functioning. That's work, social, family or community. They're not able to function and so that's when you need to intervene. So at this present time with COVID, especially at the beginning, we were all stressed. And I think right now, everybody's stressed. And this is the beauty about COVID, and you know, I use the word beauty, is that we are all going through it at the same time. We are all experiencing this event. We're all experiencing the same uncertainty about what is going to happen when that time comes for us to leave our homes. So from that standpoint, it's almost quote-unquote "normal" what it is that we're going through because no one's ever experienced this. It becomes an issue when you start to withdraw, when you no longer want to associate yourself with your support systems, when you no longer want to do what you normally find enjoyable. That's when it becomes an issue. So it's really mindful for parents to really watch their kids. Really watch your children if there are any changes in the way they move about the house, the way they communicate with you, the way they are. And also for yourself to also take some time to self-reflect, to say, am I coping well? Because kids watch you, they're watching you. If you, I know, we are all dealing with uncertainties. We're all dealing with, you know, financial and there's just tons of things happening that is universal at this point. But if you're not coping well, children will not get a strong sense of safety. And coping doesn't necessarily mean that you have to pretend that you're okay. You can communicate that things are tough, you can communicate with your children. But if you're not dealing with the stress well, kids are watching. And what we want to teach them during this time period is resiliency, is how to be tough, what is true grit, especially if you are to become an athlete. You know, the life of an athlete is all about resiliency because not every race is going to be good, not every competition is going to be good. And how do you get back up? How do you get back up from a disappointment? How do you get back up or how do you get out of the house after being in the house for seven weeks? What do we do? How do we go about it? So it's really important to, you know, to keep everything in check. How do we go about ourselves? So, you know, during this time, I'm hoping people, like we've been in the house now for seven weeks. So it's not like at the beginning, the beginning, everybody was rushing out buying toilet paper and paper towels. We're going crazy, you know, but I think everybody's calmed down a bit. You know, the grocery stores seem to be a little bit more manageable. Everybody seems to kind of have a routine of what to do. And I hope everyone in their homes have a routine in your home because the routine is what's going to give you some sense of stability. You know, some semblance of control because really, we are out of, we're all out of control right now. We don't know what to do, right? So routines are important. What Julius said about sleep, eat. Sleep, eat, what else did you say Julius? You said something else, sleep, eat, and there's a third one, I can't remember the third one.
Water.
Water, oh yeah, water is important, water is important. But there was something else that Julius said, but you know, everything that Julius is saying is important, not just for the athletes, but also for family. Having your same routine. Kids now, especially the adolescents, they're going to bed later. You know, they're going to bed two, three o'clock in the morning, they're getting up late. That's so out of their routine. There needs to be a routine of some sort and there needs to be some sort of purpose. You know, why am I up? What am I doing? What are you planning to do today? Doesn't have to be big, doesn't have to be there.
I had muted my mic, but the other things I was talking about was just communication.
Yes.
Reestablish a link with your coaches and your peers and your fellow athletes.
Absolutely. I mean, having the ability, can you imagine if this had happened 20 years ago? You know?
No, we haven't.
We would all be, I don't even know what would happen to us because now we have technology. We are able to communicate like through hears, you know, with Zoom and you're able to see each other. You know, having that FaceTime. You know, kids are encouraged to FaceTime or WhatsApp their friends so they can see them and talk to them. They're encouraged to join little, the apps like House Party. I'm not sure if you all have heard that one. Hey Mo, you Mo, you must have heard of House Party. I'm sure, who knows?
Yeah.
Yes. You know, there you can play with games with friends and have a good time. There are also different apps and what I was thinking I would do is I would send Christine a video of the different apps that you can download if you're finding that your anxiety is really high. You know, things like Calm. Calm is a really good app. There's parts of Calm where it teaches you how to breathe because breathing is everything in anxiety. If you don't know how to breathe properly, I'm not sure as a runner, if you've ever had the experience of holding your breath and it feels like your heart is racing and you feel like you're kind of, you're becoming disorientated and you're, and that's almost like a panic attack. I'm not sure if anybody's ever experienced, I've seen some soccer players when my daughter played rep, the coach had this drill that if they didn't breathe properly, the girls literally started having panic attacks on the field. And it's all about breathing and how to breathe. And if you don't know how to breathe, you can actually bring on a panic attack. Okay, so just understand that. Panic attacks is when you breathe up in your chest, your upper part. We need to get the breath down to your stomach, your diaphragm. And it's big breaths in and out and slowly. Panic attacks are usually, you know, it's more holding your breath and breathing rapidly and not taking that breath that time, right? So it's learning to mind that. Calm also has these different app sounds, different sound apps to help you sleep, like waterfalls, rain, things like that. And also, there's also a voice that helps you to relax. So yeah, so there's also, you know, there's different things I can send to Christine and Christine can send to the group. And also, I'll be sending Christine a list of contacts for kids to use if they want to reach out and speak to someone other than their parents, like the kids helpline and things like that, okay? So that's all I have to say, I'm not sure if there are any questions. I can go on and on, but I don't have time to go on.
I could absorb everything you're saying, I'm like writing all the notes down, I love it.
Dr. Nurse, thank you. I did have a question that came in and I'll just abbreviate it a little bit. As athletes, motivation seems to be more difficult when people aren't meeting up in groups or training towards a specific goal. Do you have any general advice for our athletes regarding motivation, suggestions or tips?
You know, it's funny that I was thinking about this motivation and about it earlier, but you're already doing it. I think it's important for coaches to check in. I think it's really important for coaches to check in on their athletes to find out, you know, how are they feeling and to go with it because there is no wrong way of how to deal with this COVID, you know? And I think to be mindful that everybody has their own way and to meet them at their place as opposed to pushing them, not realizing that they might be fragile, you know, they might be having a tough time. It would be very insensitive. But it sounds like the coaches have, they have plans with their athletes, they're checking in with their athletes and they're making themselves open for their athletes to call them. And I think that's the most important thing. You know, it's like, as I was saying to Austin, you know, the schools right now, they're not pushing the kids academically to get things done. They understand that, you know, every family is different, every child is different and they're moving at that child's pace through this COVID pandemic thing. So I think that's, I mean, I don't really know any other way to motivate a child or adolescent to do what they have to do when it comes to training.
That's really interesting because I really like, I think, and as we were mentioning before when we were on the phone and I'm sure a lot of people here have read about it too, about that whole intrinsic versus extrinsic.
Yes.
Motivation, and it's kind of interesting because, and obviously, I'm just speaking for myself and this is totally anecdotal, but I'm a really big, I'm an extrovert and so I feed off of other people. Julius is like, no, it's really shocking. But like, I really feed off of other people's energy. And so that's why I've always been a part of like big massive clubs to work out with people, work out at the gyms with friends, lots of people around. I do really well with people and even in school. Not that I would feel like I need to compete against someone, but like having someone who's smarter than me to look up to them. Like it really helps me have lots of people around. So that's like extrinsic motivation. And it's interesting because now with Zoom and I was able to work out with friends on Zoom, it's still motivating. Without technology, like you said, people like me, I'd be like in bed all day.
I know, I mean, and I'm very extroverted as well and as opposed to Austin who's very introverted, like this is, he loves, he's loving this. This is great for him. But when it comes to track athletes, there's no team. There is no team as a, you know, in a sense, you have to go out there on your own. You know, if you're the only one in the family that's in track, you're out there on your own doing your thing and it's difficult. So as much as you, there are this intrinsic factors that pushes you to do what you need to do, you can also during this period, learn to have more intrinsic goals or factors to help you push because you don't have the extrinsic factors right now. So this is where you're developing certain sides of yourselves. For myself even, I have never been in the house this long. You know, I have never, I go out and I go grocery shopping on Monday and I literally stay in the house until next Monday. I've never done that, ever. If I stayed in the house, if it went on to the second day, I will find a place to go. I don't care where, I don't care what. And so it took a long time for me to just get comfortable with it, it's okay. It's okay to be home, you know? Before it was no. When it first started, I was antsy, I was antsy. So I think we are learning to develop certain sides of ourselves.
Yeah, that's really interesting.
Yeah.
I think, I think in terms of motivation, as track athletes, we are very goal-oriented, right? You know, we are looking at our competition, like you know, our groups and most groups, they're looking, they were looking at HOPSA, these kinds of things with their goals. With this current COVID, of course, there's no track, but you have to be innovative in the way that you do things, right? Last week, the world record holder in the pole vault and the last two Olympic gold medalists in the pole vault, they had the pole vault competition between the three of them, each in their own backyard. And they picked a height and they figured, okay, who can do the most, the most jumps over five meters in 15 minutes? Right? So you know, judging from that, you know, as our young athletes, you can get a group of three, four or five people together and see who can do the most burpees in five minutes. You know, you can get a little reading, a little reading group together and, you know, you'll read a book and come back and discuss it. You know, there are little things that you have to do that are kind of outside of the box that can keep, that can keep you more motivated.
Yeah, and that's something that I think is really important for people to understand that this is really tapping into our creativity, you know? We need to be creative in order to survive this. Like how do we connect with other people? How do we feel fulfilled? Before, we used to just fill ourselves, we were just busy, 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 busy. We never took the time to say, okay, what can I do? You know, like how many people are now baking more, baking more, cooking more, you know, painting? My daughter went to the dollar store to buy some paint supplies and it's all sold out. So, you know, being creative and thinking out of the box is so important.
Yeah, you have to be creative. Like early on, there was a guy from France that ran a marathon on his balcony. Took him six hours or eight hours, but hey, what the heck, he did it.
Excellent, and let me just piggyback on that. Thank you Jillian for making this suggestion, I'll share it with the group. And then I see Coach Godfrey wants to chime in as well. But from Jillian, piggybacking on the question that came in for Dr. Nurse, "Might be fun to do a virtual run around the world for the kids in the junior distance group. Might give the kids some more motivation and a little collective goal." Might give the kids some more motivation and a little collective, uh, goal to work for. Coaches could keep track of how long, how many kilometers the kids are running as a group per week. According to the schedule the coach gives out to each athlete. And the coach could update the group each week, how far we've run as a group. I.e. week one, we ran from Toronto to Thunder Bay. Uh, give the group a goal to see how long it takes us to run to B.C., et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That will go on our post-town hall survey and I will put that out there because that is a great idea. And I think out of tonight, we can have other ideas as well. And we're just going to beat this thing right to the end. Like, we're going to continue to be a team and we're going to be social and we're going to do everything we can, um, as a club. Um, but, uh, yeah, I'll have a post-town hall survey for those kind of specific, that kind of specific feedback. Okay, and Godfrey?
Oh, yes. Um, this is for, for Dr. Nurse. Uh, okay, the conversation that I had with my athletes is that they are feeling more disappointment. Disappointment in the fact that the things that they had hoped to achieve this year are now out of the window. And that's what is causing them more anxiety and stress. For example, the kids may, the kids wanted to go to OSA. They can't make it to OSA. The kids were prepared to go to school and get scholarships. Uh, they're not able to do that. Okay, so this anxiety is causing them stress. How can they actually deal, um, actually, actually deal without stress?
Well, this is the first time you've ever called me Dr. Nurse Godfrey. I noticed that, Godfrey. Anyway. You can call me Andrea, guys, that's fine.
Okay, Andrea. I'm trying to be professional.
I know. It's like, come on, like, what is that? Who is he talking about? Who's he talking to? Anyway, um, you know what? Uh, and this is where resiliency comes in. Life is disappointments. I mean, you can't make things better. You can't make things better. And unfortunately, our young people, young adolescents, uh, children have not learned to build resiliency, that sometimes things don't work out. So what are we going to do? It's okay to be disappointed. It's okay to be sad. It's okay to cry. It's all, it, though, all, those emotions are perfectly fine. Okay, so now what are we going to do? And so this is a, a learning, um, opportunity for kids to learn to be tough. This is just how it is. This is just how it is. Everybody all over the world is experiencing this. This is nothing novel to Canada, novel to Ontario, novel to the GTA. This is not, this is, this is just how it is. So let's talk about it as a family. Let's talk about it as a plan. How do we move forward from here? And we just move forward. But to be wallowing in these things, life is full of disappointments. They have to learn now. They're, they're not the only ones that did not get a graduation. Both my kids, both their graduations were canceled this, uh, this year from university. So, you know, like, you know, I don't even know what to say to them. Um, but that it's just life. And they're both athletes. They both missed opportunities because of injuries. Um, because of what other reasons why? More because of injuries. You know, um, our son went to, where, where was that? Where you got, the pot fell on his toe? Ukraine? He went to Ukraine for what? World Ju-, World Junior? He went to, and do you remember that, Godfrey?
Yeah.
Just before, he was ranked number one in Canada and a pot fell on his foot before his race, the night before. He was out. He flew to Ukraine, pot fell on his toe. He couldn't get his foot into a spike. And that was, and that was that. He was done. He came home, didn't even run.
Yeah, no, he ran.
Oh, he, oh, he ran with a sore toe?
Yeah, yeah, he ran with a bad toe.
Oh, he rode with a bad toe?
Yeah, he ran it for, ran away there.
And, uh, it, it wasn't a good experience. These are learning experiences and we can't always shelter our kids from feeling anxious. As I said, anxiety or stress is not all bad. We need to teach our kids to deal with these disappointments.
Yeah. Basically, like, Godfrey, like, you know, in, in this particular situation, um, you know, like, ob- obviously, yes, uh, you know, as I said, uh, you know, as athletes, as track athletes, we're all goal oriented. We're looking forward to OSA. Every year, we have our group of people looking forward to OSA. Um, they can be really disappointed if they got to regionals and screwed up. Right? But in this situation, nobody's going to OSA.
Yeah, nobody's going to OSA.
There's not a person going to OSA, right? So, you know, you, 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 you have to look at it from, find, find some positives from it. Yeah? And, you know, you look at Weidman Niker, the 400 meter world record holder. He's happy as heck because the Olympics have been postponed. Right? He was injured. He would, he probably would not have made the team. Right? Um, then on the other end of it, you know, you have some people that, uh, you know, they were just looking towards the Olympics as their final, final year of competition. Now, they have to go on another year.
Yeah.
Yeah? So you look at a guy like Justin Gatlin. The guy is thirty.
Thirty-four?
Six, thirty-six or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, you get up there in those ages and one year makes a big, big difference. All right? So he was just going to go until 2020. Now he has to go to 2021. Is his body going to hold up? It's, right? So they, 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 they have to look at, look and find some positives for it that they're, that they're going to get a really long training base. They're going to be strong as heck by the time they come back next, um, that next spring. Right? Um, the, the, you know, for, for the guys or the, the kids that are going to university in grade 12 and looking for scholarships and stuff like that, like all of them are in the same board. Right? And the universities now, uh, determining their scholarships, they have come up with their own criterias of how it is they're going to look at things.
So, I was going to say, you know, in, um, when you're, and I, I don't know the psychology for sure about this, but basically, um, you know, when you stub your toe and you respond by putting out your right, let's say it's your left toe and you respond by putting out that right foot, it's kind of like a neurological response to do that. And I read this somewhere where, um, basically how you respond to the stress becomes part of the memory and like, if you do it over and over again, that's how you cope with that specific stress. So, um, I think that like as parents, as coaches, like this is going to be one huge stressful time in all of our lives, but especially in those developmental years where they're going to remember the stress, but more so, they're going to re, what's actually going to happen is that they're going to remember, like, even subconsciously, the, the coping methods and mechanisms that they use to handle the stress. And so what we can do is really encourage positive coping mechanisms. Like, well, you know, for adults and the extreme men, like drinking and smoking, that's, that's a negative way to cope with stress. Where there's more positive ways to cope with stress. Um, and then in the end, it's basically what doesn't make you kill you stronger, what doesn't make, what can kill you make you stronger. But more so like how you're coping with it.
Exactly. Exactly. But there's also good, there's also good from this. We're spending more time, you know, as a family. Uh, we're, we're, we're having fun. I tell you, I mean, uh, our kids are, you know, are soon to be twenty-four and twenty-two. And if it wasn't for this, our 24-year-old would not be home. He would not have all this time with his sister. Uh, you know, as a family, we, we watch something at least once a week together. We have discussions. They're cooking dinner for us. I mean, like, there's some, there's opportunities that if that has not happened, this would definitely happen. You know, this would, I know if they were younger, I know I would be out there doing things with them. You know, having little adventures, something to preoccupy them. So, you know, it's, again, it comes down to, it comes down to creativity. But it also, more than anything in this world, is building resiliency. If you do not have resiliency, you cannot get through university. You, or college, or, uh, 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 some sort of, um, uh, apprenticeship program. You won't be able to because there's somebody will, that will tell you you've done something wrong. Somebody will have to correct you. You're not perfect. You will have bad days. And when you have those bad days, you have to get yourself back up. Not everybody's going to become an Olympian. Not everybody's going to make a career in track. And even these high-track people have bad days. We're preparing them for life. We are preparing our kids for life. So how do we get through this COVID as best as we can? What can we do? We come up with a plan as a family. We come up with a plan individually and we do it. And that's it. And we get back up.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you.
One more question, if you don't mind, Dr. Nurse.
Andrea.
Thank you, yeah. Do you have any general recommendations for athletes to practice positive thinking or other good mental health habits?
Oh, my gosh, practice positive thinking? Oh, my gosh, that is, uh, huh. That's a good one because, uh, you know, um, that takes therapy. That takes therapy. It takes a long time because we're programmed to think negatively. There's research to say we are programmed to, uh, to think of the bad before we think of all the good that has happened. So, you know.
It's a survival instinct to make sure all the neg, scary is out of the way.
Well, I think, you know, I'm assuming that, uh, people have good relationships with their children, right? And if you have good relationships with their children and hopefully they communicate with you and you can hear what's in their head. You can hear what, what, how they're thinking and you can then reframe it. I mean, I do it constantly, reframing, reframing, think of a different way to, to, to see that situation or to say that thing. Because words, people have to understand how important words are. You know, to catch yourself saying negative things. Uh, we do it all the time. We do it all the time. But it's to catch yourself to, to reframe that, what you've just said. I would say to a friend of mine, oh, I got such bad knees. And she'll say, no, your knees are perfectly fine. They're just painful at times. And I'm like, oh, okay. Right? Something as simple as that. And what you say is what you manifest. I truly believe in energies. I truly believe that if you say negative things, negative things, you will see, negative things will happen. We have to be very careful with your words. And you have to teach your kids how important it is what you say, how you say it. Because words have energy. And that's what you, that's what you are manifesting.
Excellent. That's amazing. Okay, if anybody has any last minute questions, please let us know. Now we are going to wrap it up. And we don't have any last minute questions. Okay. Okay. So I just want to say again, thank you so much to all the parents and the children who joined us tonight. Uh, as a club, we are here for you to communicate with us. We're happy to give you workouts. Um, we're so thankful to have, uh, Dr. Myrie Nurse today to join us and give us all that excellent information and encouragement. We really, really appreciate it. We really are in this together and hopefully we will come out of this together as well. We look forward to seeing all the kids at practices. And, um, if you, uh, want your coaches' information, I put that on one of the screens here and you can, um, I'll send that, we'll send that out. And, uh, actually Julius sent it out earlier, uh, with the surveys, but we'll send it again with our post-town hall survey. Um, and we'd love to hear some feedback. We're here for you and I hope you're all going to have a wonderful evening and we will talk to you soon. We're here so tomorrow night, a social distancing workout. Tomorrow's the leg day. So, any last minute word, any last words from Julius?
Yep. Um, just wanted to say that I think Trevor had some, uh, issues tonight, couldn't make it. But I think he and, uh, fellow coach, Chris Marist, have put together some videos. So I will let them know, but would probably post them on the website. If not, we can put them somewhere and, uh, send a link to them. But they're just basic, uh, workouts, how to do drills and, uh, I think he'd like to see them posted somewhere.
He was on Instagram. I think it's still on our live feed there. So.
He did them today, right? There's some new ones or something.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your evening. We'll see you all as soon as possible. Stay safe, stay healthy, stay running.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Thanks all. Stay safe.